We definitely appreciate the opportunity and thanks for the self-introduction. I can see a lot of enthusiasm. Like I said, Martin Russell and Caleb Bell, I'm the Director of Economic Development for Warren County and also the Executive Director of the Warren County Port Authority. And Caleb is our Counsel with Brickler Eckler. Brickler has offices that are up in Columbus and also has offices that are down in the Westchester area down in Butler County. Specifically Caleb is in the Columbus office which has actually been very beneficial for us on a couple of projects that we've had as it relates to an employee with the State House and those types of things. So it's nice to be able to have Caleb there to walk across the street and do some of those types of things. I think what we really wanted to discuss today is, we kind of want to go through it somewhat fast but not necessarily too fast depending on what questions you may have. And I think the way that we've broken this down in the presentation is, somebody believes, because I think there is some need depending on the amount of information that you gathered from the review reports and then we're going to be came to ours is that there's really a lot of opportunities that sit inside of Port Authorities and so we needed to kind of discuss some of those things and then look specifically as to the Warren County Port Authority and what we've been able to accomplish since our creation in 2007. And I think we are humbled and flattered at the opportunity that we've been in discussions with folks that are outside of our territory. I think that is, except for me, I think is a good opportunity to express my gratitude towards the Port Board and Commissioners of Warren County because you'll find as you'll go through this and if you're talking to other courts in these dimensions that a lot of the jurisdictions have the ability to create courts in some view, but then what they have allowed them to accomplish or allow them to work on will then vary by scope from community to community. So I think we're very fortunate to work for a Port Board inside of Warren County that really actually offered to come out and leave you, said please interview and go ahead and issue, seal the issue of that. Turn over a little bit to Caleb and I would say throughout this, unless there's, I don't know the protocol that you have per se, but any questions that you have, either going through this, please stop us and whether you want to know from the legal side or practical side, however you see fit, we'll do our best to answer those and if you don't have an answer over the port authorities, back to us.
Thanks Commissioners. So what is a Port Authority? Well, it is its own public entity. It is a political subdivision of the state that's created by a resolution of other political subdivisions. So much like you are the elected officials of Prell County, there are county commissioners in Warren County and they appoint the Port Board. So the Port Board is a creation, kind of a creature of the county and it has appointed officials to govern. They ultimately report back legally to the county commissioners as the elected officials of that county. And there's a whole statute for Port Authorities, it's 4582 of the revised code. And like I said, the cities or counties or townships that form a Port Authority are the entities that appoint the individuals that push the port. Sometimes you have cities and counties that work together like the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authorities as an example, or the Columbus-Franken County Finance Authority, that's also an example, or a city and a county that work together for a Port in Warren County, the Port Authority is just a county or, so it has jurisdiction everywhere in the county. And the role of the Board of Directors is really to approve all of the ports' projects and all the ports' activity under 4582. Ports are really a model for regional collaboration. You can collaborate if you're forming the port, you know, with another entity, like I said, a city and a county together in some of the larger urban areas. Ports also collaborate with the jurisdictions within the territory of the port. So example in Warren County again is Warren County and Lebanon. Lebanon is not one of the forming entities of that Port Authority, but the Warren County Court has worked with the city of Lebanon in a number of projects. You may hear of tools like TIF or CRA or abatement tools or JED if they're the township. And those tools have some limitations if just the city, the municipal corporation is using a tool. So if Eaton had a TIF, there would be certain limitations about the way that the TIF money could be used if it were to issue its own bonds secured by that money. The Port Authority acts as a conduit. You can assign revenues, you can assign projects to the Port Authority and that exempts those projects from some of the strictures of municipal corporation law or township law. So that's a really helpful thing that ports can do. We'll talk about that a little bit more.
What you sometimes will create a Port Authority is also not necessarily that all the deals that they're able to do. The Port Authority, the origination in Warren County was created when there was a significant bond of discussion about assisting the county as it relates to building a sports complex. Warren County for instance, tourism's significant, you know, things like Kings Island and Gray Wolf and so on and so forth. But we sort of tried to feed into that tourism county development and they were having a challenge in getting additional room nights because of the lack of fields. The challenge on that was, so we kind of created potentially look on that project and then the way the economy went in 2007 to 89, that kind of fell by the wayside. So then we then looked at some of the other things that we'll be discussing here as avenues to make the port significantly viable. And that's when we started interacting obviously with the local jurisdictions, trying to figure out where their projects are, how they can intertwine ourselves. And I assume the same things that Shonda would do is that none of these projects are done in a vacuum. You have the local portion of it. And this is really, that helped us out in the county level because traditionally we were able to offer workforce development and Shonda and that was really stressed and that it was a work team, it's not really the workforce ready. But we kind of wondered to have some of that difference, something that was a little bit different than other counties that were just doing workforce. So this port has really allowed us to jump on that and give the state anything else. So it kind of starts with one, having the ability to craft depending on what we need to.
So you know, to Martin's point about collaboration outside of the jurisdiction, he had mentioned that we've had some conversations with folks outside of Warren County ourselves. And this third bullet about collaboration with communities outside of this jurisdiction is really done by cooperative agreement. So the revised code's been revised recently over the last five or 10 years to significantly enhance the ability of any governmental entities in the state to cooperate with one another. And we've really seen that take off in the Port Authority context because you've got a number of economic development services that can be provided and sometimes the communities that need them don't have a deep staff or don't have a lot of resources. So it's easier to have an entity that is more regional in scope to help us in those projects. Those are done by cooperative agreements. So what I think maybe the kind of cross-suiting training staff is what that proposal from Warren County was cooperative agreement within the Port Authority and the county commissioners. The reason is with you all is because you would otherwise have the authority to create a Port Authority. So if you did not want to approve that setup and startup process, you could use the services of another by agreement. So that's the way that cooperative agreement works. And there's also other collaboration with, some Port Authorities work with jobs Ohio or they work with states in order to get projects done. What are the purposes of Port, the list here is really important. Transportation, economic development, economic development's quite broad in Ohio as you know, it's jobs, it's capital investments, anything that creates more investment in the state. Housing, recreation, education, governmental operations is often used quite a bit. Transportation, economic development, governmental operations are the group that usually ports get involved with just because of the nature of what they can offer. And you'll note the constitutional provisions as well, those are helpful exceptions for the Port Authority. They can, the ports can cooperate directly with private entities, they can make loans directly to a private person. And that's something that a county or a city can add a lot more to call it doing. So our way, section 13 provides a big exception for entities that use this way of a Port Authority. What are some of the ways that ports work with private sector growth? Big one is infrastructure improvements. So when you have maybe a developer or a warehouse or logistics distribution facility that needs access to roadways, that needs significant turn valves, rounded valves, that needs maybe water or sewer to service site, ports can get involved in some unique ways to help reduce the costs on that otherwise public infrastructure. And a number of things that are exemptions that the ports benefit from, we'll talk about this too, they benefit from competitive bidding exemption for economic development projects, they benefit from a prevailing wage exemption for the cost of projects. So some of those things can really, for a private developer who is otherwise trying to access the governmental services, if you went directly to a city and had the city work on that project, you have a competitive bid prevailing wage project that might have more time or more cumbersome aspects to it. And you know, if you're trying to incent a significant development that needs to move quickly, it may be helpful to have the ability to elect out of those choices and do things on a more fast track kind of business oriented cases.
And this was actually our first sort of project out of the gate. We've gone at 75 and stayed at 63. You might have seen that there's a home new development center. It's back there, it's a fairly large logistics and distribution hub. There's two buildings and there's a road that's building back into it. It's a little stop right there. I think here in the next few weeks that might change and we might run it up to make it bigger. But that was one of the parts that we first worked on in some infrastructure and issue that we're on as one of the projects. Specifically it was the city of Monroe who were doing some of the tools that Caleb talks about, they were tipping and doing some special assessments and those types of things. But when they actually went out for raising funds to do some of the infrastructure, the sewers, the roads, some of those types of items, they looked to the Port Authority to go out and issue that debt now. So what we did is we went out and used some of the riders to see what the market was going to set there and there. Obviously where the interest rate and those types of things were going to set there and foot. And so we issued $10 million worth of debt. That is debt that is funded by the money that come out of the improvements in the land and then on an annualized, well, semi-annual basis then we pay that down. And so a lot of those public improvements, we strive to have some of all of them that we can assist. And some things that I think help also from creativity perspective is that you can find some of those gap areas in this instance, there was a need for a fairly significant retention, retention point area. Normally that would be at the cost of the developer. And a lot of things that the Port Authority did is we took a long-term easement onto that 48 which actually gives us our first port. But what it did is it made it a public improvement which was then able to be used as TIF dollars. So again, it's one of those sort of creative outside of the box things that Port Authorities can do that a lot of jurisdictions will struggle.
And you know, a city might use assessments for its own purposes. It might assess for something, issue debt based on that assessment. It's a very public improvement that generally benefits the public. And you know, when you have private developers who have significant infrastructure needs, those tools can be used, but it's hard for cities to use them. So the port is being able to basically have an assignment of that money from the city that is used to pay debt and because of that constitutional exception, it makes it very easy to do versus what would otherwise be quite difficult municipal assessment process. And you know, Martin's, a couple of examples also indicate other things importance to do. They administer grant programs directly. So maybe if the county had a program from the state that it needed some administrative services on, you didn't otherwise have a county staff or who would be capable of doing that. So Port Authorities kind of gather the economic development knowledge in a lot of places and so sometimes having somebody to administer a grant program on your behalf is very helpful and has been able to do that in different places. So those are just kind of some of the ways in which ports are used. Some of the different powers that kind of hit at this again, ports can loan money to a private person. They can acquire any type of property. It's quite a very broad power. They can sell or exchange property also and that's done without competitive bidding versus the county's process of getting rid of unused property or a school district or a city's process. And those are quite cumbersome, there's a lot of bidding and things like that that have to be done. Ports can directly contract to sell at whatever consideration they're on, so it's really helpful. Guarantee obligations of others, that's possible if the port has some pot of money that it wants to use to guarantee a project, you can do that. Some other kind of really novel things, facilitating off balance sheet things. This is where you got a developer who doesn't want to take debt on his own books and so he wants to have a lease payment which is a current obligation instead of a debt, a long-term obligation. And in order to show that, you could have the Port Authority issue lease revenue bonds. It basically same lender who's going to lend the money to the project, but it ends up being current expense for that entity in its office balance sheet versus an ongoing expense which is a debt which would be on its balance sheet. So accounting treatment for some of these things really provides a significant benefit to folks. We talked about grant programs and then again the final point is just exercising the powers of another political subdivision to the extent that you all agree. So that's the grant of the contractual arrangement required. Revenue bonds, revenue bonds are a key item that ports use to get projects done. We talked about special assessments as backing for revenue bonds. Taxing the financing service payments can serve as a revenue stream that back a revenue bond to the Port Authority. Lease rentals like I mentioned can back a revenue bond. You can also combine these things. So sometimes the way, oh, jobs Ohio or PSA would make a loan, they would maybe make a loan for some equipment in a building and then they would have the local Port Authority issue a lease revenue bond to build the building. Okay, so the pairing those tools with other tools the state has can provide a package for this person who's not located in the state. So that, you know, using ports' powers to do certain things on the list of things to do, using state powers or county powers or other powers to do the other things on the list, you know, that's, ports can kind of fill some of the services that the other areas can't do legally. So that's the other thing.
And I think a good point on this though is I think a lot of time there is some misperceptions out there that you really can only tap into port services if you do some sort of financing transaction as far as a settlement or a loan out and bonding after a certain money. And I think what we have done, and Caleb, we'll talk a little bit about the legal, is that with money the way it is now, that if you've got a good bank relationship and interest rates are fairly low, there is a different entry point. A lot of the folks that are working out to do it now from the development side are really bringing their own financing to the table. Whether that can just be a traditional bank or maybe they have cash reserves. So a lot of the things that we're able to set up and offer is, as Caleb has mentioned, some quicker to market, cheaper to market, those types of things, really can still be done, it doesn't necessarily have to be tied up though of a bond transaction. It can be if that's what they need, but it doesn't have to be as well. So it really is tight knit, listen to the customer that is coming and say, I like this location, but here are the parameters. I might be interested in looking at this, but in reality I've got a good lender. We've seen that more recently as interest rates are low. And that might get back up and change obviously if the interest rates start sorting back up and we might be able to give you to a market because it's a little bit different to me about taxes of status and those types of things.
And on taxes of status, I mean, there's a very good thing that ports can help with at city of the 501(c)(3)'s that are in your community. They otherwise have difficulty issuing their own bonds or getting bond financing that is tax exempt, but a Port Authority can issue lease revenue bonds that get them taxed at rates which is really good. So think of, oh, I don't know, a private university would be an example, or maybe a private hospital, or like a Goodwill entity, I'm doing a transaction for a Goodwill entity, it's a $2 million expansion of Goodwill distribution of the Sandusky County of Ohio. And they're a 501(c)(3) and otherwise it's hard for them to just go to a bank and get a tax exempt rate because there's a bond. Tax exempt, the Feds, the Internal Revenue Code grants taxes and status if they're the bond transaction. So you have to have that conduit issue in the middle of the Port Authority to get them the better rate and that's a really big example. So kind of just as a recap, the big picture issues that ports are really helpful with, easily conveyed property, that's super helpful. Can lease any real or personal property, so leasing in order to make up financing work is really helpful. The third one's kind of interesting, sales tax exemption. So normally when the county or a city or any governmental entity goes and acquires a project, they are exempt from the payment of state sales tax on any of the construction materials, the concrete or the wood or anything else. And Port Authorities have this unique ability to enter into the title arrangement with a developer to grant them an abatement on the sales taxes that they would pay for the building. So imagine a $10 million building with $5 million of material at six and a half, six and three quarter, or whatever the rate ends up being, that could be a free $400,000 savings to this developer. And as a choice, you know, if it's across the Indiana line or up here, $400,000 can be an extra, you know, way to get a project done. And we've been pretty successful at using that, that tool to incent people to locate wherever they're looking at if they're making choices.
And I think there's a couple of things. One is is that the Commissioners in Warren County have said that anything that we charge as a Port Authority, we'll adjust the best we can or we do put the county where they would otherwise lost. So what they're really doing, because the state is the one that has put this in OLC so they're really, I think they're pushing for Port Authorities to do this. And I think that their game plan is, is that we might take a little bit of the hit on the sales tax or when you get the state income tax and all the things that come with it. And so the Commissioners have raised so many fees that we can come back to the Port Authority, we'll just put it back into economic development. So it's almost becomes a positive self-charity for the world and that. So it's been a real, I think a really good tool that's been used and it's been out there significantly. At least in southwest Ohio, unfortunately Warren County's been, it's been much more, I think, being nice about it.
And then a couple of other just big points, I talked about competitive bidding exemption which is very helpful for speed to market issues. Exemption for prevailing wage is just helpful for, to give developers certainty that they're not going to pay prevailing wage on their internal project, that's helpful. It can also be used for infrastructure as well. The development of the road or maybe the sewer line can be done without paying the prevailing wage under the ports exemption. And finally, there is a overall, you know, there's a lot of things that ports can do, but what they cannot do is use monies raised by taxation in any fashion and still get these exemptions. So that means that any port transaction is a even revenue transaction. It's based on the revenues of the development, the revenues of maybe diverted tax revenue that's done through a TIF, that's not tax under state law, that's actually a revenue and you can use that to secure financing, so that's good. Or assessments are treated as revenues as well. So as long as it's not millage, the actual tax that you all collect.
Assessments are treated as revenue.
They are treated as revenue when you use them to secure a bond financing. So they are requested. Assessment is requested by property owners, it's an additional payment that he's willing to make above and beyond the millage that's otherwise on the property. So the real distinction there is millage versus other, all the other stuff we can use, the millage you can. And that even goes through like if the Commissioners wanted to support a project, you have to carefully to identify revenues of the Commissioner, revenues of the county to be used to apply to the project. Sewer revenues would be fine, you know, or other revenues of the county that are revenue but it's not taxed, it's not millage. So that's kind of the big restriction in place on ports. I have a comparison where I could go through the thing, but it's in the PowerPoint and I would leave that with Commissioners of the York if they've worked on it. And then finally, we have a couple slides that go over some of the projects that the Warren County Courts done. Martin may be talking about some of the projects.
Just to sort of background, we were created in 2007 as I said, really originally coming out to assist with the sports complex. And it's funny how you can never really look back until you're already so many years ahead of, you know, that we're talking sports complex now, that we actually might have some legs to it, but it's six years after the fact. But we have a seven-member board and as Caleb has said, is that they were, they're community leaders, business leaders, but each time they're up for renewal or any time that somebody might retire or resign for years no longer, I have a couple of times the Commissioners are the ones that have to give the final approval for that person to move for another term or to be placed onto the report. And really kind of a generic assist community, business development, through financing, the opportunities. I probably actually need to go back and change that because we have, again, what I talked about earlier is, it's a tool for a lot of the things legally that Caleb has put into the presentation, but it can be used significantly more than that. So I may actually want to tweak that bullet and not just put financing opportunities, it's probably more self limiting than I believe we realize. You know, the first one that we really went out and worked on was the I-75 corridor part. It's changed names now, it's called Park North and the Outlet Mall. In both of those transactions, we issued debt based off of revenue that was going to come out of the increment property values and the collections there. We gave about $10 million as I said inside of the Park North and an additional $6 million into what the Sensian Premium Outlet Mall is. And a lot of this comes down, I think, to the discretion really of not only the Port Board, but of the overall Commissioners. Some folks might sit there and say, I think it's interesting how we all look at, for lack of a phrase, different kinds of pieces of the pie, through our different lenses based off where, what somebody happens to set up. As a Town Street trustee, the property taxes, you probably look significantly at property but also sales tax. You know, the cities are going to look at income tax and those types of things. And so for the Outlet Mall, for instance, I think that was the one that the Commissioners really wanted to get accomplished because 1% of everything that was going to be sold out there was going to go into their general revenue front of them, getting that off the ground most significantly. Some things that, where partnership came pretty quickly was, we really weren't up to speed if you will, as far as having things ready on our first, 2007. And Butler County has, Butler County has a Port Authority and the Atrium Campus or Middletown Hospital is making that transition over there in Warren County. And the Atrium YMCA wanted to have a Y that was close to that. So it's going to be in Warren County, we were kind of a new entity and so we partnered up with the Butler County Port Authority and we worked together to get that issuance done and any fees that we collect, we split fifty-fifty. So there's collaboration across borders, there's a collaboration of a fee structure we come up with and then how we share that going on. A couple of things that aren't really projects that we, I probably didn't understand fully the value until probably the last couple of years. Port Authorities have the ability, depending on the makeup of the community, to be a place that, as I mentioned, consults to be holistic of the entire county. In Warren County, it's a little bit of a challenge because we're squeezed between the two metro areas of Dayton and Cincinnati. Because of that, you do have some separations and you may end up having some of that also here. But the Port Authority as a holistic entity, a lot of folks started approaching us saying, if we were willing to do a study, if we even found some funding, could we post that? Could we use the Port Authority as an umbrella organization to conduct that? And so what we've done, for instance, with the Arts and Cultural Center is that we created a subcommittee underneath the Port Authority where they came in and did some studies as to what type of cultural center they would want, where it should be in the county, what's in the funding that we'd be required to get it going. And once they matured as a body themselves, what we did is they created their own nonprofit status and we birthed them. But we, you know, we kind of let them sort of go. The Butler-Warren County tech incubator study, I think we have a lot, you may experience this as well, is there's a lot of ingenuity and there's a lot of individuals that are doing things inside of their house that maybe they work at, maybe they work at Hinkin' but they want to sit there and do some things. For us, it may be somebody that looks at P&amp;G and they're picturing something in their house and they've got something there, but they really don't want to go up to an incubator that's in Dayton where you don't know things to them, they're just a long trip, a long journey, we're all the way down to Cincinnati. You know, what do we do? So we did a study and at that stage it was, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure that's already had, we might need to promote that a little bit better, but we probably don't need to do bricks and mortar. What's interesting about that is about five to six years later, we're now back to that conversation and it is much more a bricks and mortar type of conversation because I think a lot of individuals are really saying, we don't really need to go there, we can do a good job of our own because the fear is that if they go there, will they ever come back? And I think that that might be something that Caleb wants to look at is it doesn't, I don't know what it would look like, but those are some of the things that we've gotten ourselves involved with over and over time. I think this sort of shows a little bit of the evolution of the Port Authority because we came out of the gate really trying to do those types of projects where we did issue debt based on revenue coming out of that. Over time though, and with some changes in the state law, we look at sort of the FedEx model and the Miami-Dade Gaming model. And that was groups that were looking to possibly lay in inside of Warren County. Miami-Dade Gaming, the old 11 raceway track, it could have gone outside of Warren County. So we treated it as it was a prospect that... So we treated it as it was a prospect that we needed to fly as hard as we could to keep it here. And those projects were really heavily driven by the sales tax exemption, to where we, as a port authority, have a ground interest in the land, and then we also have a project lease, that once the, once the building is constructed, it's conveyed to the port authority, and then we lease it back to them. Because of that, they're able to get a sales tax exemption. And how you can use this potentially to the benefit of the county coffers, might use Miami Valley Gaming. You know, well, we sold the FedEx. The FedEx one was sort of a break in for the county. We made back up in fees, although we otherwise would have lost from the county sales tax on construction materials. But for FedEx, I mean, that was probably a net about a $350,000 savings to them. And when a business is looking, and that was $170,000 square foot building, quoted about $6,000 for free, which just so happened to coincide with the size of their offices. And so their offices were free. And so this was, they were looking around the tri-state area. Miami Valley Gaming had a little bit more captive, but they saw a significant rationale in doing this. We estimated, now this is a perfect scenario, that if they would buy everything in Warren County, all their steel, all their concrete, you know, that's not the children, but if they were, based off the price point for this transaction, they would spend, or the county would have received $550,000 in sales tax in the most perfect scenario. Well, in order to get some additional savings through this transaction, they were willing to pay one and a half, one and a half times base more than that to the county. So in reality, the county actually made more on this transaction than it otherwise would have if we would have offered this at all. So we've done that. We did the same thing with EV, and these things start to add up. You know, Miami Valley Gaming is a different type of industry, but it is a fairly large job creator, you know, five to 700 jobs, and then you add in the full-time employees. But really, I think what is more important from a manufacturing, logistics, just more of a base, is these smaller ones, the EVs and the Fedexes, that are the 100 here, that are the 25 here, that are the 40 here, because you pile all those together, and it matches that Miami Valley Gaming, and those are the ones that are going to sit there and have a higher dollar value for those that are municipalities that have income tax and those types of things.
Plus the multiplier effect of the EV employee, I mean, that employee going to restaurants in the community living and perhaps loving on, I mean, the multiplier effect is huge. And it's something that's very hard to quantify, but more jobs is something that maybe they would want.
So for EV, for as an example, it was about $78 million in construction, 25, 25 new jobs, and they doubled the size of their facility. They have an electronic beam that is basically made of seven electronic beams, which beam requires about 25,000 to go through this space. What we've sort of moved into as well is the two alliances that you see up there at the top. And when I talk about, kind of went away for a little bit, but then also came back, is that we are the host of the Warren County Small Business Alliance. We receive, we brought all the economic development communities, private nonprofits and private sectors together, and said, you know what, we don't have a small business development center inside of Warren County, they're going in outside of their county. Instead of making this a high entry point, where one or two entities is paying $20,000, $30,000 themselves to top this up, what if we just all actually work together and make the entry fee $500 or $1,000? Where it was something that if you lost somebody, you know, sting a little bit, but it wouldn't hurt as much. But also on the other hand, is that each of these communities sell to their constituents, look, we're not actually spending a tremendous amount, we get something significant out of that, and that is the actual assistance for small businesses. Because we all hear that small businesses are the engine, but do we really have a lot of programs that assist them? So we are the host of that, and we contract with a nonprofit organization, which is called the Alliance here, to actually perform those services. We spent 2012, end of '11 and '12 putting this together, it launched on 2013, and actually the state is taking notice of it, and our director is out there speaking on this, and because of the funding cuts coming from the state and the feds, everybody's looking at their bottom line, and he's not. Because it just looks different, and the model is, and that's, I think, what a port authority can really sit there and offer, is a place for folks to bring their ideas together and possibly have a way to get those initiated. I talked about the Chamber Alliance, the six chambers have come together and signed an MOU with the port authority to create an alliance. And here's what we've done from, I think, a port authority's perspective. We haven't put onerous types of things on top of the Chamber Alliance, for instance. We really have made it fairly simple, and we've said, as long as it is holistic of Warren County, and as long as it is going for economic development, we will be supportive. You craft it how you want to on the local level, as long as it meets those two things. And they've done an excellent job of doing that, and that's why you saw us in DC, was it was the Warren County Chamber Alliance going to DC, because we really wanted them to understand what it's like when chambers and bodies work together to advocate for policy or whatever the case might be.
So, real quick, so we have, are you familiar with our county partnership, no, the partnership?
Totally, yeah.
So if they wanted to, they can come and talk to you and work with you outside of us?
It would be...
Is there a group of businesses that are all...
I think that they, I think that they could probably, just on first blush, so, you know, that's why I have a lawyer next to me, they can help each other out. I think on first blush, they could be an excellent source of prospects and needs, being in the business community, knowing what the infrastructure need here is, or whatever the case might be. But for us to really come in as a port authority to assist a actual transaction, we need, for lack of a better phrase, the blessing of the board here, because what the port board has said to me, and I think you were there at the meeting, is they're willing to sit there and cross county lines, but only if they're...
Oh, right. But once we would, you know, sign off on the cooperative agreement, it would be within the realm of reality that they could, if they wanted to, approach you with a project.
By all means, I, well, that's one of the things that we have not limited ourselves to. There's, and maybe Shonda has done some of this and can express it, or maybe you've done it individually, is, is we all have, as counties, the ability to do reports. Some have, even some that have have come to us. Because I think that what we have been able to sit there and demonstrate is that we let the customer decide when our objection point is. We don't just stop and say, we're only doing bond transactions. We don't stop and say, well, if it's not over a $5 million deal, we're not going to sit there and discuss things with you. We want to sit at the table with anybody that wants to discuss opportunities with us, and then we, I can pitch what we can offer, and let the business say, you know what, we want that, or you know what, for this particular instance, it's just not going to work out. I think because we've been outside of the box on that, and have been willing to be creative, we have, I think humbly garnered some credit, if you will, and folks are willing to discuss this. But yeah, we would partner with anybody, we would get information, we would show up to wherever, whatever we need to show up to get the deal done. That's just our contact information there, again, for you to sit there and have. I would say that, you know, port authorities are extremely complex. When I, I came in, in 2007, the port was being created, I was the deputy director at the time, took over, and I'm going to 10, and Caleb has answered a lot of questions for me when I took over, and I was like, wow. But it takes about a year or so, I think, really, to fully encompass and completely understand what the powers are to do. And I tease in being a lawyer, but probably one of the better things is to have a lawyer who really understands what their complexities are, and with Caleb up there doing things with Tito Lucas County, and also in Columbus and Warren County and others, you can then pick and choose and some of the creativity that you've seen across the state and significantly win. So any questions that we didn't maybe answer, or...
Do you represent others, is that what I...
Yeah, of course. I have a number of port authority clients across the state, and they include, the Tito Lucas County Port Authority is a bond client of, I've done, I've been the lead representative from our firm, up to that NBD four, out of the tier, so. And I also work with the Union County Port Authority, the Columbus Stringing County Police Authority on different projects, the Dayton Montgomery County Port Authority on different projects, and done some projects in the Cincinnati Port. So I, you know, my practice tends to be on the western side of the state, and I kind of go, you know, up and down, you know, 75 and across 70, and that tends to be the area in which I...
Well, I obviously understand that if we're going to try to move economic development forward in this county, there's an absolute advantage to belong to it, I mean, the economic development. The economic advantages, well, through numerous ones, yet they're very extensive, so.
Well, I think that what we would probably, you know, suggesting, I've had these conversations with Shonda, is that, you know, if there's any particular, you know, projects that are possibly growing in fruit, it'd be a good way to get, you know, the relationships kind of a few, and kind of see how it's going to go. If there's long-term things, we can start going that path as well. I really see this potentially in a couple of different things. It would be, one, partnering up through a cooperative agreement, I'll kind of pick an arbitrary time, where we work for a year or two together on projects, and then, you know, the private county, the commissioners kind of look and say, you know what, we could be doing this ourselves, and you create your own port authority. Or it could be, hey, relationship is so good, and we've done well, why reinvent what we can just sit there and continue to cooperate with. And I think here, you know, open to, obviously, I own those, since we put the cooperative agreements and conveyed to Shonda, and asked for the folks to review. But, you know, just definitely appreciate the opportunity, and for its interest, we definitely would like to come to the table and see if it can assist.
How do you differentiate yourself between other port boards? What brings you guys to the top?
I hate to sit there and, I don't hate to tout yourself too much. I really would say that it's really, I mean, more outside of the box, given a couple of examples in this area. You know, for instance, Caleb mentioned in here that prevailing wage was taken away from port authorities. In southwest Ohio, port authorities aren't as strong, that you might hear from the city with this county, because for them, prevailing wage was just a way to live. And so their port authorities are very large, because they just historically, they've always been able to offer the sales tax exemption, that they had the prevailing rate. But down here, you say to a company, I'll save you this, but I'll cost you more over here, and they got away from you. That really, I think, opened us up, and we have aggressively gone out and pursued deals that would have that type of structure, like with the Fed Ex and those types of things. The difference, I think, though, between ports here in southwest Ohio is really where the focal point is. I think Cincinnati's port authority is very much on, you know, I'm not trying to be scared, but come to a river, can they take over, and getting the parking meters and those types of things. Montgomery County, I think, is, does a lot of projects, but they have certain members on their port board that may not be willing to sit there and let the prevailing wage go, even though they can by law. Or if they let it go, they'll have some other restriction on the side that we even have to suffer and deal with. Butler County's port authority has, I think, struggled with really ascertaining its port act capabilities. And I think one of the things that they did was, instead of doing what with Warren County, and having the Economic Development Office be on the loan, or be the staff of the port authority, they attempted to go out and bring on a staff person right away, which means from day one, they have to find deals to support themselves. And if that doesn't happen, I'm usually, they're strapped, and I think they're finding themselves in there. And that's where the meeting they do are at, that's why City Middletown, which the project they want us to do is in Butler County, is coming over to Warren County. Clinton County is so focused on the airport, that sometimes, right along, they lose sight of the rest of Clinton County. And I think because of that, we have filled a space in the void that folks that really want to use the port authority are going, I like that they're doing there, how do we do that? I mean, we've, I mean, I think it's forthright, to say, we've had one or two counties that actually have a port authority approach us, and say, would you partner with our board to help our board understand what we can do? That's a little shocking to me, maybe I'm too close to the tree to understand, but that's even occurring as well. And I think it's because we have been very aggressive, we understand that it's the businesses that we're trying to serve, and we want to interject ourselves to get them what they need, which in turn means that those communities have more revenue, more people working, paying the property taxes, buying things, which benefits all local jurisdictions.
And just one follow-up from legal perspective, and I think that the Warren County Port Authority does an excellent job at kind of being willing to think outside the box, speaking, you know, the commissioners supported this outside the box, and the revised code changes all the time. There are always changes in the program, and, you know, there are ways in which, I mean, you could see under the Casey administration, ways in which the ball has been pushed significantly towards economic development and job creation. Those legal changes are, you know, always happening. So if you are stuck as a port authority in the way that we've done things, you're not catching the new opportunities that are really kind of changing the puzzle and making it, you know, even more beneficial for this project or that project. So I think that the support from the commissioners to think outside the box, and I respect, and really keep up with the changes of all, has been really positive.
And that is very generous of them to allow you and the board also to allow you to come over to us, and...
I think I had, one of the, one of the port board members said after that, with me, for instance, it's, again, it has to come down as to whether or not you, as a board, agree, because this is your territory, is, it is common to me was, it's not about necessarily these boundaries, it's about the services we provide. And if we can go out there from the Warren County Port Authority and provide a service that is outside of our territory, that's what we should be striving for if we're true to our own, you know, everybody wants to govern to our own life of business. That's what we're really going to sit there and do, is to provide a good service, and the opportunities will sit there and present themselves. And I think that's what we've really tried to do, is to be responsive, to be outside the box, to offer some things to companies that they aren't seeing in other locations, that must them to, makes them want to be a corporate citizen in our jurisdiction. Well, why not in Creighton? Why not in some of the other ones? Because I know that you've got, you know, development opportunities, and you've got insignificant companies that are sitting here, why not work with them to just keep on going and going and going in your backyard? Your expansion of your existing companies here is what's going to really sit there and be the growth, that's for any jurisdiction. And yeah, we did some of those wins every once in a while, but a lot of those expansions comes from people who say, hey, I love Creighton County, I want to be in this backyard, and we just want to help you maybe go back.
Can you tell Susan on the board?
Yeah. Our board is made up of, the only permanent seat is the seat that is held by the county administrator. So whoever sits in that seat will automatically have their A seat. The other six are, the first one is Greg Sample, he was with IRG to get all of the, excuse me, RG Properties to get all of the Austin Boulevard work. He is the chair. The vice chair is Steve Wilson, who is the CEO, present CEO of OCEAN Bank. The secretary of treasury is the, running secretary is the treasurer. The others are Cheryl Johnson, who is a dean at Sinclair Coastview. We have Joel Reben, who is the present CEO of Autobahn, which is a large retirement in the area of Warren County. We have Dave Holden, who is senior VP at Abbot's Manufacturing, which is our largest, I don't call traditional, but traditional manufacturer. And then we have Greg Byke, who is a retired gentleman, who was the present CEO of Cincinnati Gas and Electric before that one, or Cincinnati. The other individual we had on air was Doug McNeil, who retired from, he was the present CEO of Atrium Medical Center. He retired from that position, he retired, he moved across, he retired, it's a different situation. So we have found just different community leaders that have a variety, from development to banking, to education, to manufacturing, to healthcare, it runs the thick end of the economy.
Chris, you have anything?
No.
Is there a good comment? If you'd like to comment, you'd like to answer?
Okay. Hopefully, we filled out the packet, goodness. And I could need just copy of a hard copy of the presentation.
We'll be sure to email you.
And we can email you, yeah, or in case anybody wants to have that.
Thank you. Well, we've got the cooperative agreement in front of us, so we'll probably discuss it there in a few minutes, unless you're ready to go right now.
Are you going to sign your partnership note?
Yeah, I have, I've got permission to, yeah. I think my charge was, as long, as long as we were asked, I could, I could come barreling through, so.
Are there any downsides to this agreement? Are there any downsides to this agreement?
No, I think the, I think potentially the downside is, really to us, because if we don't perform, we rip it up and you send us...
30 days in advance, shredded paper.
Exactly. I mean, again, we, it's, I think what we will have to start doing is working with your staff to make sure that we're uncovering as many opportunities as possible. So I don't see it as a downside, I just see a road that there's a learning curve that Shonda or others in the partnership, how will we want to craft that, really are just going to have to get in a rhythm of communication. Because I think that we, assuming that the board is interested, is we would probably try to find opportunities that aren't just the same traditional, I've got to finance and you want to do this. So I think that's a part of just the learning curve and the communication. And really throwing ideas on the wall, and if they stick, great, if not, at least we try. And I think really it just becomes an evaluation process that maybe we do at, get up the six in here type of thing and saying, hey, we really like this, but we need to do that. And if we perform and can fix that or we're performing well, then we'd love to keep it going. If you find that you don't see the value, then terminate the cooperative agreement and you decide how you want to move forward. I don't think this locks us in.
The only provision which I think places any real restriction today on the county is if you do enter into an arrangement for a project, that project is moving forward, then the agreement contemplates that if you had involved the working port, that you would consummate that project. Or if the project, you know, tore up, that whatever the arrangement about that project satisfied that was made at the time. So it's to make it so that if the Warren County Port comes in and takes up a deal, you know, 90 yards downfield, that the deal isn't just terminated at the last minute and then you all take over and, you know, consummate it. So it's just designed to carry forward anything that you do actually cooperate on. I think that is a limitation or risk to the agreement. The only other one, I just would make a comment that generally for all of these transactions, the way that I have always counseled the working port is to ensure that any fees or transactional expenses are paid by the people who are benefiting from the service. So in this case, probably the developers who are locating in private county. It's not necessarily the commissioners. It would be, you know, these projects that are going to be, you know, generating value to folks. You know, we would set up any fee structure so that the developers bear the cost of, you know, all the...
Because ultimately, they are the ones that would be making the profit and they can make.
Yeah, and so that's a good government and, you know, restriction that I always make sure that is passed on. Any of these projects also that have received full indemnity from the developer for the county's participations, the county is identified to the extent that the county had any involvement whatsoever. So that is something that we always insist when we have dollars, because they're getting the service, they're getting the benefit that they didn't otherwise have, and they have to cover the risks.
And I would tell you that, you know, from that perspective, is what Caleb just said, his advice and how it would be for is, the only real revenue that the port authority has put into any projects has been more of those like the Chamber Alliance and Small Business Development Alliance. And that was really only done because the developers paid fees to get these inducements and then that allowed us to step up and do some other types of things. And so, you know, I may have to sit there and front-load Caleb a couple of bills until something comes, you know, down the pipe, but that's really the small amount of front load that the port authority has actually done. You know, the port authority in Warren County received a couple of years of a small stipend from the county commissioners, but beyond that, we have...
Self-sustained.
It's been self-sustained. And so, you know, for instance, the way that we normally operate with a developer that was looking to have some deal that is worked on, is we send them a deposit agreement that basically says is, you don't have to pay it now, but here's the deposit amount. When we get a signed term sheet, it's non-refundable because Caleb has his fees that he's going to have to sit there and incur. And we'll have to sit there and work on how we're going to structure to make sure that private county sees as much, realizes as much as it needs to, and then we get some fees for doing some of the service, so we'll have to work that out. But that's paid by them. And then once they sign that and get the term sheet, they sit there and funnel it, they sit there and cut a check to the port authority. And then when he bills us, then obviously I cut that right out of that. The other thing is, is that we have the ability to structure things the way, very flexible. You know, some companies, depending on their size, they need to have as much disposable cash upfront. So in some of these lease transactions that we do, we backload it a little bit. Some of the folks, for instance, with the Miami Valley Gaming, we knew they weren't in that situation, so we didn't need it all upfront. So I think that's where, when I talk about communication, that's where we get to sit down and say, what does your board need? What does your partnership need? That we can sit there and figure out how we negotiate this out. And again, it just, it comes down to, I hate to say it over and over, but the flexibility that the port can bring to the table is astonishing.
Is there any other county that's there and is going to want this?
With us?
Uh-huh.
No, we're, I would tell you that we've talked to two or three counties and we're in various stages. I would say that there is a city that's probably fairly close as well that would be interested in doing those types of things. But I know that Caleb can speak of, there's tons of other counties that do that outside of this area.
The Toledo Port has, I think, about 20 counties that it actually has cooperative agreements with. The Summit Port has five or six. The Cleveland Port doesn't really have any written agreements, but by tradition, they do work in Geoguys and the surrounding counties. So it's becoming, though, you know, the law changed the last couple of years. And this is two years ago that revised code 9.482 was put in place that allows any government to cooperate with any other. So we're seeing this, I'm recommending this a lot more because of that authority. So it's becoming more common.
So before any thing is granted from the port authority, each project has to come before this board to get that benefit? To proceed with that benefit?
Essentially, this process would work such that this agreement grants broad territorial authority for the Warren County Port. And then, you know, as the project arrives, and before any type of specific lease or anything like that happens, you know, the terms of property are going to need to be worked out. So whatever the, you know, actual compensation to the Warren County Port is, compensation with the commissioners are from the project, that all has to be decided each project because, you know, we can't...
So you would be aware.
Yeah, you would certainly be aware. We cannot prejudge what, you know, might end up needing even. So that's why it was written very properly.
And I think that would just, from a customer satisfaction perspective, would be important because if we came in and did those things without letting you know, what would be the likelihood that you'd want us to do?
Martin, we got to talk.
Right, no, it's exactly right. But I think what, you know, Caleb did from a broad perspective was to sit there and allow us to sit there and have them flow based off of the circumstances.
Now we can take a phone call. Now we can say, oh, there's a project here, we've got this existing arrangement, I can take a phone call and go to the port.
Right, and I think also too, you know, Shonda, and I'll again not blur all the structures here, but I think Shonda will be that good, you know, gateway. I mean, if I need to come, or Caleb and I need to come collectively to do the commissioners, that's, if we have to, that's fine. Or if it's done through Shonda because we're working with her a lot more, then that's the way it'll go and however the case might be, we can, we'll sit there and get that accomplished. I just know that there was, I don't know if it's still in there, I've heard bits and pieces, but I know that there was some growing in fruit with the project that had the opportunity potentially to, might request some of these types of things. And so we wanted to get in potentially as quick as possible so we could offer that service if that's needed. And so to, you know, if we can get a great big, nice little win of coming down through the gates, that just benefits us all, obviously.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need me to sign something or do you want me to wait to sign something?
It's a pleasure aboard. I think, I don't see a negative to it. We've looked at this over the last couple of years. And we see last year, we talked about it extensively and I think it's a benefit for us and it's a way for us to have these tools available quickly. And as you say, whatever down the road works out, if it looks like we need our own or if it works out, this is more compelling, let's figure it out. I have, I think it'd be a great tool for us to have.
Right.
I want to make devotion here. I would move to enter into the agreement, approved by signing the agreement with Warren County Port Authority.
I'll sign to that.
Should we call them off?
You should, Dave?
Yes.
You should, Robertson?
Yes.
You should, my son?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Good luck.
See you again.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.